May the blessings be received, Father God, as we pray tonight. Council meeting, Father God, that you be in the midst. Welcome your presence, Father God, here it comes, go on and come to your will. Pray for us, sit as a whole, Father God, there's so many things our city that need your blessing, your hand upon, Father God, as well as our country, our nation. Our nation really needs a revival, Father God, to bring us together as one people. But again, we pray from a local basis, Father God, that just unite this city, Father, one city that would please you and become the city that you please with. Pray for leaders, Father God, that can lead us in the way you have to go, Father God, be a city for the world, that your true love, unity, and harmony be seen among all of us in this city. Bless your name for all the things you do and you're going to do, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor Jones. Roll call of council members, please.
Council member Guyan, council member Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Council member Lemmons.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Martinez.
Here.
I'd like to excuse Lori, please.
At this time, I'd like my colleagues to join me at the podium.
Tonight, it is my pleasure, along with my city council colleagues, to proclaim May as Education Month in Paramount. The city will be honoring the students and teachers of Paramount Unified, as well as those involved with the Paramount Education Partnership, or PEP. Our long-term dedication to the importance of education is a hallmark of our town. The close relationship between the city and the school district has made both entities healthier and the community stronger. We've been celebrating Education Month for many years now. As a teacher myself, I feel it's one of the most important things we do as a city, supporting and encouraging students, teachers, administrators, and everyone else involved in the pursuit of knowledge. And we thank everyone tonight for being a partner with us. Joining us are members of the Paramount Unified School Board of Education and the district superintendent. Please come forward as I call your name. Board President Vivian Hanson. Board Vice President Sonia Cuellar. Board Member Alicia Anderson. Board Member Linda Garcia. Board Member Tony Penya. And Superintendent Dr. Ruth Perez. I'd also like to bring up members of the PEP Board of Directors. We appreciate the time and guidance that they provide throughout the year. Please join me as I call your name. Chairman Matt Canaby of Englander, Canaby &amp; Allen. Vice Chairman John Tanklage of Maricon Vinegar USA. Board Member Glenn Clausen of Altair Paramount. Board Member Linda Johnson, a supervisor, Janice Hans Office. Board Member Dr. Max Martinez. Board Member Dr. Perez. Board Member Alicia Valades from North Gate Markets. The Paramount Education Partnership was founded in 2004. In addition to awarding college scholarships, which we are highlighting tonight, PEP runs two community learning centers that provide many benefits to our students and to our residents. The city has run PEP since 2008. We have spent millions of dollars over the years on this endeavor. The fact that so many of our scholarship winners tonight will be attending UC campuses suggests that the resources we have devoted to PEP have been well-spent. This year, we are awarding $140,000 and a record of 42 scholarships. That figure puts us over the $1 million mark since the PEP Scholarship Program began. Much of this has been made possible by our generous business community with their annual support of the PEP fundraiser that was held last week. Right now, I'd like to recognize those donors who gave $5,000 or more in 2018 to help our youth pursue their dreams. If anyone from the companies are here, please come forward. Altair Paramount. Maricon Vinegar. R&amp;N Cruise Trust. Weber Metals. Are they present? We also have smaller fundraisers throughout the year. Since December, for instance, Chipotle, Ochotaria Rio Luna, IHOP, Gus's Deli, and Alondra Hot Wings all had days where a portion of their proceeds went to the scholarship fund. We thank them for the community's support. City employees took part as well, with special events where they could contribute to the fund. This year, about 11,000 was given to the scholarships. The school district gets involved too, with the annual pennies for PEP during March. We will recognize this year's top performers from that a little later this evening. But I want to quickly point out what a remarkable success it has become. With Dr. Perez cheerleading and setting goals, the students, staff, and administrators at PUSD raised 122,000 this year. At this time, we're going to pause for a photo. At this time, I want to acknowledge the Scholarship Selection Committee. These volunteers read and rated every application that came in. There were 151, so it took a lot of time and it was a big job. If you are here this evening, please stand up when I mention your name. Ms. Paula Cooney of Paramount Iceland Zamboni. Dr. Marina Morales at Paramount Unified. Dr. Manuel San Miguel of Paramount Unified. Ms. Loris Telamontes of Paramount Unified. Ms. Sandra Bichel of Maricon Vinegar. The PEP scholarships are given to students attending a two- or four-year college or technical school and range from $1,000 to $4,000. The selection is based on academics, an essay, outside activities, future goals, and economic needs. And now, I am proud to announce the PEP Scholarship winners for 2018. If you are here, please come forward as I mention your name. Cesar Arzete will be attending UCLA. Jessica Avalos, Saritos College. Mari Carmen Ayala, UCLA. Alisa Baca, Cal State Long Beach. Adelis Burgos, UCLA. Andres Cardenas, Cal State Long Beach. Congratulations. Congratulations Andrea. Zarela Anel Carrera, Cal State Long Beach. Diana Chaldes, UC Santa Barbara. Karina Cortez Garcia, UC Irvine. Congratulations. Nitsa Correnta, Mount St. Mary's. Clara Doe, San Jose State. Christopher Duran, UCLA. Pablo Esparza, UCLA. Congratulations. Michael Gorm Gomez, Cal State Northridge. Congratulations, Michael. Ismerelda Jorreta, Long Beach City College. Lisa Huetto Sanchez, Cal State Long Beach. Rosemary Jimenez Medal, UC Merced. Juan Lopez Villarreal, Cal State Long Beach. Brianna Macias, UC Santa Barbara. Kristaline Magaña, Saritos College. Ioana Martinez, UC Irvine. Isaac Mena, UC Irvine. Congratulations. Melissa Montoya, UC Santa Barbara. Carlos Moreno, UC Irvine. Ezekiel Moreno, San Jose State. Omar Munoz, UC Irvine. Judith Maria, UCLA. Brianna Paz, UC Berkeley. Chloe Fanuthong, UC Irvine. Anila Ramirez, UCLA. Congratulations. Jasmine Ramos, UC Irvine. Luisa Robles, UC Davis. Cassidy Rodriguez, UC Berkeley. Carla Rodriguez Picasso, UC Irvine. Cecilia Sines, Cal Poly Pomona. Paulina Salas, Cal State Dominguez Hills. Derek Salade Perez, UC Davis. Isenyas Y Fuentez, Cal State Long Beach. Javier Solazano, Saritos College. Danny Bosquez, Saritos College. Brianna Villa Verde, UC Irvine. Vincent Wirth, Asuma Pacific. Congratulations. Not only is Vincent the end of the list, but his scholarship marks the point at which we have passed 1 million in PEP scholarship money given out. So congratulations Vincent. Vincent, please come back. Vincent? Oh, he wasn't present? Okay. Okay, let's see. Okay, our next one is, let me mention also that Adrian Launda, from Assembly Member Anthony Rinden's office, will be here to present certificates to each of you in the courtyard. Okay, as I mentioned before, okay, do you want to take a photo? Okay, we'll pause. Okay, come back for your photo, please. Pennies for PEP produces excitement on all of our campuses about the idea of attending college. It's a great advertisement for higher education. This concludes the PEP segment of this evening. I want to again to thank the PEP Board members for being here this evening. Teacher of the Year. Every campus in Paramount Unified names a Teacher of the Year. Tonight, we are saying thank you to these outstanding educators. Please come forward as I say your name and school to receive a gift bag from the city. Charlene Larson from Early Childhood Education. Elsa Medina, Alondra. Caitlin Carroll Collins. Tracy Espina Gaines. Carrie Hatch Hollydale. Heather Van Eed Jackson. Aidé Garlardo Jefferson. Congratulations, Aidé. Veronica Richards Keppel. Christina Holy Lincoln. Tiffany Brooklander Loseritos. Nina Song Mokler. Renee Rodriguez Paramount Park. Congratulations. Esperanza Caboletto Roosevelt. Mary Ann Rem Tanner. Dawn Lapier Wertz. Jessel Waters Zamboni. Elda De Leon Buena Vista. Jeff Grimes Paramount High West. Congratulations. Anthony Geronte Paramount High School. Noel Reese Paramount Adult School. Congratulations. You are all dedicated professionals, and your work educating our children is sincerely valued. Congratulations to each of you. Okay, we're going to pause to take a photo, so please come back. Now, we'd like to honor two special students from Paramount High School's class of 2018. Please join us when I call your name. Vela Victorian Fernanda Corona Riso. Solicitorian Armando Torres. Fernanda has been named a 2018 Edison Scholar, which gives her a $40,000 scholarship to pursue the fields of science, technology, engineering, or math. She will be attending Duke University in the fall. Armando will be attending Stanford University. He is also receiving a special scholarship, and I'd like you to stay here for another presentation after we take a photo with you and Fernanda. Okay, at this time, we'll take a photo. Would Carla Navarro please join us? The Gates Millennium Scholarships are very prestigious. Only 300, congratulations. Only 300 high school seniors in the country receive them annually. Armando and Carla are two of those students this year. They have both been on the city's youth commission for two years. They are the best of friends.
I've been mentioning this to you for quite some time now and told you that we need to take action, and as a result, we are only one of a handful of cities in our region to apply for and receive a grant from LA County to help us develop a long-range plan to deal with homelessness. In fact, in March, the City Council took action to approve of a contract with a consultant to draft this plan, in which is a partnership with the City of Bellflower. Tomorrow night, we'll have a community input session at the Paramount Park Community Center as part of the grant to discuss possible solutions and hear input from the community. Again, the grant and these efforts are more of a long-term solution. In the short term, however, we, like any other city in California, are dealing with homelessness through nonprofit outreach groups, law enforcement, and also with our public works cleanup crews. So tonight, we're very privileged to have with us the premier expert on homelessness from the LA County Sheriff's Department, who will tell us about how law enforcement, our law enforcement provider, deals with homelessness. So now, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Jeff Dietrich with the LA County Sheriff's Department. Lieutenant Dietrich?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members and residents. My name is Jeff Dietrich. I'm the lieutenant that oversees the LA County Sheriff's Homeless Outreach Services Team. Now, to put things in context, in 2017, over 550,000 people were homeless in the United States. Of that number, 69% were over the age of 24, and 20% were under the age of 18. Approximately 2/3 of those people were individuals, meaning that over 360,000 people were staying in emergency shelters or transitional housing programs in the United States. And that number will become evident as we talk about the problem here in California. California alone accounts for 25% of the nation's homeless population. The number of homeless people in California are 134,278 by the last count. Now, using that number, California has over 68% of the nation's unsheltered homeless population, meaning that quite often in most states, those that are experiencing homelessness have some type of shelter, some type of supporting housing, where most of our homeless people here in California are unsheltered, partly due to the weather, but there's some other factors there also. Approximately 21,000 families are experiencing homelessness in California, and we have over 40,000 veterans who are experiencing homeless in the United States. And if you look at the numbers, California has over 11,000 of those 40,000 veterans who are experiencing homelessness. Now, this study was a Weingart study in 2011, and it hasn't been repeated to this degree, but the numbers are useful in the discussion. At that time, when they did their study on homelessness and poverty, they found that 48% of those who are experiencing homelessness have graduated from high school, and that 32% had bachelor's degrees. 75 to 80% of the population were unemployed, and approximately 20% have only been employed for less than one year. 25% of that population were sexually abused as children, and 27% grew up in foster or group homes. So we take those numbers into account, you know, as we move forward here in 2018. As I said earlier, I oversee the Homeless Outreach Services Team. That team used to be myself and one deputy sheriff for the entire county. Now, we have myself, a sergeant, and eight deputies that are assigned to the team. Now, here at Paramount, that's served by the Lakewood Sheriff's Station under Captain Harpum, and thank you, sir, for inviting me here tonight, you have two deputy sheriffs who are responsible for your patrol division. So those deputies work hand-in-hand with Captain Harpum's staff to the hands-on, boots-on-the-ground real solutions, knowing what the current problems are on a day-to-day basis. My unit is a countywide unit, so we're a support staff to those here at Lakewood Station, and we've dedicated, and those were the first two deputies on the team, we're dedicated here to you guys in this patrol division. My team's primary focus is enacting what's called the Los Angeles County Homeless Encampment Protocol. Now, that protocol was established back in 2011. It was a collaborative effort between the Sheriff's Department, the CEO's office, the Board of Supervisors, and the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. I've said this is one of the most forward-thinking documents in my career done by the county because, as we said, this was done in 2011. Back then, they saw that those that were experiencing homelessness, the population was exploding. Many municipalities, as well as law enforcement, were being sued and losing. Millions of dollars in various settlements pertaining to any kind of homeless encampment, and contact with not only city officials but law enforcement was proven to be negative, and they were losing many lawsuits. So what they did was they came up with this protocol. And the protocol established that a significant encampment was one where a homeless encampment involved five or more people, where those experiencing homelessness routinely gather, they've established residency, they've constructed some type of shelter or dwelling, and the collectors store their property. So by that definition, the county established if those criteria are met, then the protocol is enacted. In constructing the protocol, the county brought every single county department that could touch this problem together, meaning Public Works, flood control, law enforcement, mental health, Department of Public Health Services, and any other department, county department that has a three-letter acronym. With one push of a button, when the CEO accepted that as a homeless encampment, all those county departments were immediately deployed. It wasn't an ask, it was an order at that point. And that's what we use today. The protocol consists of an identification, meaning anyone in Los Angeles County, including yourselves or anyone here in the audience, can report a homeless encampment, and that's the identification. The CEO's office has 72 hours to dispatch my team, along with, we now have under, it came from Measure H, they have the law enforcement homeless emergency response teams that are now assigned to my team. So we no longer have to call for that resource, it's embedded with us. So we have 72 hours to respond. When we respond, that's the assessment. When we go, we bring DMH, we bring substance abuse counselors. We have about a cadre, depending on the reported encampment, of five to 30 outreach workers that go. During that assessment, we take photographs, we videotape, we interview, we consult, we turn it over to mental health and the outreach workers to interact and outreach to those experiencing homelessness at that encampment. After the assessment is done, there's an outreach phase. Depending upon the situation, depending upon where the encampment is, what's the current situation? Now, if it's on or near a railroad track, this whole process can be done in an hour. If it's in a riverbed and there's a flood expected tomorrow, it can be done in less. If it's somewhere off the beaten path where it isn't a criminal issue, other than maybe a trespass, it can be elongated. So the actual process is a 14-day process usually, but it can be lengthened and shortened based on the seriousness of where that encampment is. So after the outreach phase is done, it's called posting. And what it is, is it's posted, on such-and-such date, this encampment's going to be cleaned up. Now, that requirement is very important because, as we said earlier, the whole protocol was based on litigation and cases that have been adjudicated throughout the country. There was a municipality that did everything right that I'm showing you on the board, however, they didn't post, and they lost an $800,000 settlement to two people experiencing homelessness because they didn't give advance notice of the cleanup. So that's why, although some of these things can be compressed, the things that they thought back in 2011 have proven to be valid. If you look at an adjoining municipality's recent situation with homeless encampments, the judge's order to them basically follows our protocol. So, the protocol has proven to be very valuable, and it concludes with the cleanup phase. As I said, posting says on May 3rd, this encampment's going to be cleaned up, so on May 3rd, the same outreach people show up, along with the cleanup entity. Now, where municipalities and law enforcement have gotten into trouble in the past is, what do you do with someone experiencing homelessness as personal property on the day of that cleanup if they can't carry it away? We store it. So what happens is, through Public Works and whoever owns the property, there's a storage. And quite often, you're talking one or two people when that happens, but we always have that as a contingency plan. The storage consists of bagging and tagging and giving those who are experiencing homelessness a receipt for their property. That receipt basically has an address of the warehouse where the property's gonna be stored, has a date, time, and a phone number, and then they're told they have 90 days to pick it up. That storage and having that has probably costed other municipalities, I've been researching about seven years now, over $14 million cities and law enforcement agencies have lost simply by not having that component in their protocols. And without telling you the municipality or agency, there was a large organization that was gonna do a homeless encampment cleanup with 80 people in the encampment. Prior to the night before cleanup, they had resisted storage, and I had basically told them that the LA County Sheriff's couldn't be involved because that component wasn't there. We ended up finding a storage unit, it was a quarter of a block away, with a storage facility who charged them $160 for three months of storage, and it basically... California alone accounts for 25% of the nation's homeless population. The number of homeless people in California are 134,278 by the last count. Now, using that number, California has over 68% of the nation's unsheltered homeless population, meaning that quite often in most states, those that are experiencing homelessness have some type of shelter, some type of supporting housing, where most of our homeless people here in California are unsheltered, partly due to the weather, but there's some other factors there also. Approximately 21,000 families are experiencing homelessness in California, and we have over 40,000 veterans who are experiencing homeless in the United States. And if you look at the numbers, California has over 11,000 of those 40,000 veterans who are experiencing homelessness. Now, this study was a Weingart Study in 2011, and it hasn't been repeated to this degree, but the numbers are useful in the discussion. At that time, when they did their study on homelessness and poverty, they found that 48% of those who are experiencing homelessness have graduated from high school, and that 32% had bachelor's degrees. 75 to 80% of the population were unemployed, and approximately 20% have only been employed for less than one year. 25% of that population were sexually abused as children, and 27% grew up in foster or group homes. So we take those numbers into account, you know, as we move forward here in 2018. As I said earlier, I oversee the Homeless Outreach Services Team. That team used to be myself and one deputy sheriff for the entire county. Now, we have myself, a sergeant, and eight deputies that are assigned to the team. Now, here at Paramount, that's served by the Lakewood Sheriff's Station under Captain Harpum, and thank you, sir, for inviting me here tonight, you have two deputy sheriffs who are responsible for your patrol division. So those deputies work hand-in-hand with Captain Harpum's staff to the hands-on, boots-on-the-ground, real solutions, knowing what the current problems are on a day-to-day basis. My unit is a county-wide unit, so we're a support staff to those here at Lakewood Station, and we've dedicated, and those were the first two deputies on the team, we're dedicated here to you guys in this patrol division. My team's primary focus is enacting what's called the Los Angeles County Homeless Encampment Protocol. Now, that protocol was established back in 2011. It was a collaborative effort between the Sheriff's Department, the CEO's office, the Board of Supervisors, and the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. I've said this is one of the most forward-thinking documents in my career done by the county, because, as we said, this was done in 2011. Back then, they saw that those that were experiencing homelessness, the population was exploding. Many municipalities, as well as law enforcement, were being sued and losing millions of dollars in various settlements pertaining to any kind of homeless encampment, and contact with not only city officials but law enforcement was proven to be negative, and they were losing many lawsuits. So what they did was they came up with this protocol. And the protocol established that a significant encampment was one where a homeless encampment involved five or more people, where those experiencing homelessness routinely gather, they've established residency, they've constructed some type of shelter or dwelling, and they collect or store their property. So by that definition, the county established, if those criteria are met, then the protocol is enacted. In constructing the protocol, the county brought every single county department that could touch this problem together, meaning Public Works, flood control, law enforcement, mental health, Department of Public Health Services, and any other department, county department that has a three-letter acronym. With one push of a button, when the CEO accepted that as a homeless encampment, all those county departments were immediately deployed. It wasn't an ask, it was an order at that point. And that's what we use today. The protocol consists of an identification, meaning anyone in Los Angeles County, including yourselves or anyone here in the audience, can report a homeless encampment, and that's the identification. The CEO's office has 72 hours to dispatch my team, along with, we now have, under, it came from Measure H, they have the law enforcement homeless emergency response teams that are now assigned to my team. So we no longer have to call for that resource, it's embedded with us. So we have 72 hours to respond. When we respond, that's the assessment. When we go, we bring DMH, we bring substance abuse counselors. We have about a cadre, depending on the reported encampment, of five to 30 outreach workers that go. During that assessment, we take photographs, we videotape, we interview, we consult. We turn it over to mental health and the outreach workers to interact and outreach to those experiencing homelessness at that encampment. After the assessment is done, there's an outreach phase. Depending upon the situation, depending upon where the encampment is, what's the current situation? Now, if it's on or near a railroad track, this whole process can be done in an hour. If it's in a riverbed and there's a flood expected tomorrow, it can be done in less. If it's somewhere off the beaten path where it isn't a criminal issue, other than maybe a trespass, it can be elongated. So the actual process is a 14-day process usually, but it can be lengthened and shortened based on the seriousness of where that encampment is. So after the outreach phase is done, it's called posting. And what it is, is it's posted, "On such-and-such date, this encampment's going to be cleaned up." Now, that requirement is very important, because as we said earlier, the whole protocol was based on litigation and cases that have been adjudicated throughout the country. There was a municipality that did everything right that I'm showing you on the board. However, they didn't post, and they lost an $800,000 settlement to two people experiencing homelessness because they didn't give advance notice of the cleanup. So that's why, although some of these things can be compressed, the things that they thought back in 2011 have proven to be valid. If you look at an adjoining municipality's recent situation with homeless encampments, the judge's order to them basically follows our protocol. So the protocol is proven to be very valuable, and it concludes with the cleanup phase. As I said, posting says on May 3rd, this encampment's going to be cleaned up. So on May 3rd, the same outreach people show up, along with the cleanup entity. Now, where municipalities and law enforcement have gotten into trouble in the past is, what do you do with someone experiencing homelessness's personal property on the day of that cleanup if they can't carry it away? We store it. So what happens is, through Public Works and whoever owns the property, there's a storage. And quite often, you're talking one or two people when that happens, but we always have that as a contingency plan. The storage consists of bagging and tagging and giving those who are experiencing homelessness a receipt for their property. That receipt basically has an address of the warehouse where the property's going to be stored, has a date, time, and a phone number, and then they're told they have 90 days to pick it up. That storage and having that has probably costed other municipalities, I've been researching about seven years now, over $14 million cities and law enforcement agencies have lost simply by not having that component in their protocols. And without telling you the municipality or agency, there was a large organization that was going to do a homeless encampment cleanup with 80 people in the encampment. Prior to the night before cleanup, they had resisted storage, and I had basically told them that the LA County Sheriff's couldn't be involved because that component wasn't there. We ended up finding a storage unit, it was a quarter of a block away, with a storage facility who charged them $160 for three months of storage, and it basically prevented them from any type of millions of dollars of litigation. So having that storage component, I'm trying to do it concisely for you here tonight, it's a big deal because the courts, all the way to the appellate courts, have said that if a municipality and law enforcement don't give someone that's experiencing homelessness that simple dignity of their personal property, it could subject a municipality to a large amount in fines and losing of a lawsuit. So that storage component, and quite often, we don't need to store. Those that have experienced homelessness in the encampments have either left or there's a very small amount of property left over. So we have not had to store at a large rate, but it is part of the system. One of the things we spoke about is how long can the protocol last? We deal with encampments, I think, in every sort of terrain now, under bridges, in riverbeds, behind grocery stores, you name it. But one of the things recently in a city was, there was a large homeless encampment under a bridge. And what people didn't know was, under that bridge was the supply, the natural gas supply line to the whole city. And there were people experiencing homelessness, had 10 pallets on fire underneath that gas supply line. So when you have that situation and we're notified about that, this protocol can last an hour. But it's still the same process. And that way, we protect the municipalities that we work for, as well as the county of Los Angeles and our department. As you see here, this one was reported. This actually had 27 people living under a bridge that had railroad tracks going over it that was deemed unsafe to where it could have collapsed had a train actually gone over it. So when you have people underneath bridges, it's not simply just a homeless encampment. There's another contingent, either electrical lines, you know, other sources of utilities under there, as well as just the human danger to where if we had an earthquake or another situation with those living under there. We had a tunnel that was built in, and it was a 2,700-square-foot basement with concrete reinforced walls inside of one of the riverbeds, where there were some criminal organizations that were taking foot there. And so one of the things, too, is with the encampments, it's important that when the encampments notice that the protocol is enacted and handled appropriately, one, so those that can, that need help can get it, and other, so those kind of operations don't take hold in those encampments. Lastly, as part of our team's responsibilities, and it came through with the homeless initiative by the county, was a first responders training for law enforcement. And what happened was, it was developed, the curriculum with partnership with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, and now I teach it once a week to this point. And we're teaching in agencies throughout the county and doing private companies, as well as municipalities. And what we discussed is, who are the homeless population? Who can be homeless? And it kind of opens people's eyes when they see that elderly veterans are a large section of our homeless population. We also talk about the stages of homelessness, the transitional, episodic, and chronic. And however, that it's, with the current numbers, 50% of those who are homeless might only be homeless for 30 days or less when they first come into contact with law enforcement. So some of that money for outreach and transitional housing that's new out there, if we can connect those people to those services, it can help them transition off the streets. The third module of training is making sure that law enforcement and the deputies that are working the street understand they're not the solution. Quite often in the past, everyone turned to law enforcement to fix it. And the only way we could fix it was putting someone in jail, and that didn't fix anything. So the sheriff is quite clear that being homeless is not a crime. However, there are those that commit crimes who are homeless. And we take a compassionate approach, not a blinders-on approach. We know when to enforce the law. The deputies can enforce the law whenever they see fit. They're highly trained, and in this training, we emphasize that. What we look to be is a collaborative bridge. If we can help someone, instead of going to jail for a drunken public, go with a substance abuse, and someone from Lhasa that can get them off the streets, it's not only better for themselves, but for the communities around them. The fourth module instruction is approach and contact. I think all of us would agree that we see a larger population on the streets who suffer from some form of mental illness. I know in my days, we didn't have training on that. We learned how to interact with those experiencing mental illness on our own. So this class that I'm discussing with you now is a two-hour block. Within a 40-hour block, it's called Crisis Intervention Training, and it's the best training I've seen in my 27 years in law enforcement. So in this, we also talk with the deputies about the best practices for the best practices in interacting with those who are experiencing homelessness, who also suffer from a mental illness. Then the fifth module is Enforcement and Collaboration. We go over the protocol that I just discussed, I'm going quite quick. But, so the deputies understand each phase and why the phase is important, and then it's guided with, part of our job is to protect, like you're a contract city, to protect you from litigation when we know better. So this protocol, and we've done that with the deputies that work for you, empowering them with the knowledge of what the current situation is and what the policy is. And then finally, we go over the legal considerations and the potential liabilities. We go over that, always, everything that we do are guided by the civil rights of others, and that the best solution here is us connecting those who are experiencing homelessness with those service providers, and emphasizing to deputies, they can't fix this, but they can be part of the solution, not the solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions for the lieutenant? That's how thorough you were. Last single question. Okay, item number nine, audience number 1102. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. The zone change is basically a cleanup of a property where we actually have a split zone in the corner. It's on the corner of Orange and Somerset. And as you will hear, the property is currently owned by a church, and that this use will continue once the zone change is final and all the other entitlements are received. Items nine and 10 are related, and as such, Kevin will give the presentation for both items, but you will definitely need to introduce item number 10 because it is a public hearing. So with that, I will turn over to Kevin for the presentation for items number nine and 10. Kevin?
Thanks, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. As John mentioned, the next two items on the agenda are related to significant improvements proposed for the existing church on the southwest corner of Orange Avenue and Somerset Boulevard. The existing property is split into two different zones and general plan land use designations. The zoning is currently RM multiple-family residential and C3 general commercial, and the land use is designated both multiple-family residential and commercial. The purpose of these items tonight are to correct the split zoning and to bring about general plan uniformity and consistency. In terms of the zone change proposal, the western portion of the property is C3 and the eastern part RM. The proposal would change the zoning on the eastern part of the property to C3 general commercial. For the general plan, the proposal is to amend the same eastern portion of this property also to commercial. Last month, these items were considered and unanimously approved by the planning commission. In terms of the project, the proposed zone change and general plan amendment would allow for significant improvements to an existing church property, the Los Angeles International Church of Christ, that has been in an underutilized and dilapidated condition for many years. The property is a little more than an acre in size, and the church has been in continuous operation for about 50 years. As you know, the city adopted its zone map in 1962, following incorporation of the city, and state law requires that cities have a general plan to guide local land use decisions. Both the zone map and general plan may be changed and amended as needed, but both must be consistent with each other so that housing, commercial, open space, recreational, and public utility, excuse me, public facilities uses also remain consistent with each other. And these are a couple existing photos of the church property. The top photo is a northwest view from Orange Avenue, and the bottom view is from Orange Avenue looking in a southerly direction. And as you can see from these photos, there is a lack of landscaping, and the building is in need of an update. And these are the south and east elevations showing what the church will look like after all of the improvements. And these are the north and west elevations, again, showing the dramatic improvements this project will bring to the site and to this part of town. This slide shows the existing zoning on the left-hand side and the proposed zoning on the right. You can see that on the right, the proposal is to correct the split zoning and unify the property into C3 general commercial zone. You'll also notice that changing the property to the C3 zone would help bring about more zoning consistency to the Somerset and Orange intersection when looking at the two corners on the east side of Orange Avenue. Similarly, on the left, you can see the property split between commercial and multiple-family residential general plan designations. Amending the general plan to make the property wholly commercial also makes a lot of sense considering the existing land use designations at this intersection. As with any zone change proposal, an environmental analysis was conducted to determine if there would be any environmental impacts. And based on the analysis, the zone change will be consistent with surrounding uses and will not cause any adverse impacts to the environment. So to summarize, the zone change and general plan amendment will correct a split property situation and allow for zoning uniformity, and it will also allow for consistency with existing uses. And of course, as you saw with the elevations, these actions will allow for property improvements that will provide a tremendous aesthetic enhancement to this part of our community. But with that, staff asks your approval for Zone Change Number 229 and General Plan Amendment Number 18-1, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this item?
Hi, my name is Michael Wooton. I'm Secretary and Counsel for the church, and I'm just here to answer any questions you may have. I would like to comment on the way the pictures looked, and it talks about it being an expansion of the church, but it's really not. The building footprint is staying exactly the same, and the primary work is going to be in the site work in terms of expanding the parking, having a little more parking on-site, and also just the facade update. So that's really the work that's being done here. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience in opposition?
Motion closed, public hearing.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
And if we adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigated monitoring program relative to Zone Change Number 229?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 10. This is a public hearing. We have already been given a staff report. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor? In opposition?
Motion closed, public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
May I have the motion, please?
Please, if you read by title only and adopt Resolution Number 18.012.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez, I'm sorry. On the first item, I neglected on page two to read the second part of the motion. Can I do that now?
Yes, please.
So I move that we read by title only, wait for the reading and introduce ordinance number 1102 and place it on the next regular agenda for adoption.
Thank you. Item 11, approval.
Sorry about that, second half.
Do I need to do a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Sorry, mayor, I apologize for that.
Item 11, installation of speed humps on Richfield Street between Texaco Avenue and Garfield Avenue. May I have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Our latest speed hump request comes to us from the neighborhood that is located north of the post office, and Christopher Cash will handle the item.
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of council, we did receive a request from Mr. Cince Almasias to install speed humps on Richfield Street between Texaco Avenue and Garfield. Received a petition that contained signatures from 65% of the households on the street, and the speed humps are being requested due to excessive speed and concern for speeding vehicles in the neighborhood. The city engineer has reviewed this request and determined that approximately two speed humps could be installed, one in front of 7332 Richfield and the other one in front of 7232 Richfield. The Public Works Commission heard this item at their April meeting and recommended to the city council approval, and a notice indicating that both the commission and the council would hear this item was sent to all of the households in the area. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cash? Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
I'm sorry, I thought you said, I apologize, yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Item 12, application for fireworks permit. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. We couldn't really tell it by today's weather, but summer is right around the corner. That means our service clubs and churches are gearing up for what some of them consider their largest fundraiser of the year. So Safe and Same Fireworks go on sale next month, and Kevin will give us more information about this item. Kevin?
Thanks again, John. Madam Mayor and council members, it is indeed that time of year again to review applications for fireworks permits. And as you know, there are eight nonprofit organizations that are eligible to sell Safe and Same Fireworks in the city. All have submitted applications to do so again, and all will be using the same locations for their fireworks stands. Per our requirements, each of the stands will be at least a quarter mile apart and will be restricted to conduct their sales between the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM from June 28th through July 4th. And just to refresh your memory, the eight organizations are Church of God Prophecy, Downey Avenue Foursquare Church, the Elks Club Number 1804, Emmanuel Reform Church, First Assembly of God Church, the Knights of Columbus, the Lions Club, and Praise Chapel Paramount. Each of these organizations will also be required to obtain a city permit and follow all applicable local and state laws related to fireworks. And with that, staff asks your approval of the eight applications, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Motion for approval, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, may I? I only have one question. Did we drop it all from last year?
No, it's the same eight.
I'll second Hoffmeyer's motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Item 13, Resolution Number 18008. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. The League of California Cities recently informed us of a possible state referendum that is currently being circulated to qualify for the November ballot. If it gets on the ballot and approved, it would drastically limit local revenue authority. The proposed referendum is funded mostly by the soda companies and is in response to the soda taxes that were recently enacted by certain government agencies to combat childhood obesity. The League of California Cities is asking cities around the state to pass resolutions opposing this proposed referendum, and Karina will tell us a little more about this. Karina?
Thanks, John. Madam Mayor and members of the council, as John mentioned, the item is Resolution Number 18008 opposing the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Acts of 2018. The proposed measure is sponsored by the American Beverage Association and the California Business Roundtable. It is currently being circulated for signatures and has reached 25% of the signatures needed to qualify for the November ballot. The measure will amend the state constitution to change how the local governments impose taxes, fees, and other charges. So what would this proposition do? The measure has many implications, and here is the highlight. First, it will eliminate local authority of the voters to approve a general-purpose tax by simple majority vote. If this is approved, it will require a two-third vote from the legislative body before a tax can be placed on the ballot. And it will also require a two-third vote from the voters as well. Currently, it requires just 51% simple majority vote. The same will apply to local administrations, which require two-thirds votes by the legislative body as well as the voters. In addition to taxes, the proposition applies to fees and charges. Currently, as long as the fees that we charge are not exceeding the reasonable cost... Currently, as long as the fees that we charge are not exceeding the reasonable cost of doing business, we are allowed to adjust our costs, such as for plant checks and building permits. With this new measure, it will narrow the reasonable cost definition to actual cost. This may generate debate as far as what is considered to be actual when providing a service. We believe that the definition of actual cost can be challenged in court and may potentially cause lawsuits in the future. This measure also authorizes a referendum on council's decision on fees by petitions signed by five percent of votes cast. Currently, the requirement is ten percent of registered voters, and again, it will change to five percent of votes cast. This proposition will also mandate the tax measures to be consolidated with regularly-scheduled general election unless an emergency is declared by unanimous vote. This measure here also applies retroactively and voids any local measure approved on or after January first of this year. For example, if the measure wasn't approved by two-thirds vote, it will be voided, or if there is no language specifically mentioned for actual cost, it will be voided as well. So, who is behind this proposition and why? Well, from the title of this proposition, it sure sounds good to the public, but as John mentioned, or as I mentioned earlier too, the California Business Roundtable and American Beverage Association are behind it. The California Business Roundtable initiated this measure, and the members are listed on this slide. As you can see, they are major retailers and corporations, and actually, is the American Beverage Association is on the forefront as far as raising funds for this measure. They have raised, as of today, four-point-nine million dollars, which is about eighty percent of the funding for the initiative, to make sure that this will qualify for the November ballot. Well, the question is, why would they do that? We learned that back in two thousand and sixteen, the American Beverage Association spent more than twenty-five million dollars. Unsuccessfully, they oppose our local soda tax measures. They are combating childhood obesity and improving the overall health of communities. Since defeated, these organizations are now, instead of spending resources to oppose additional soda tax measures, they are now opposing general increase in taxes, fees, and charges. Here is a breakdown of the contributions as of January this year. You can tell the American Beverage Association is surely behind it, and hopefully, this will qualify for the November ballot. This, if this is approved, will definitely make a major dent in soda taxes. In summary, this measure is bad news for local agencies. It will limit local authority to raise revenues to pay for the services we are currently providing for the public. The measure applies to taxes, fees, and charges. Also, it sets a new precedence for referendum, and potentially, it may generate lawsuits in the future. Therefore, the League of California Cities is asking cities to join together to oppose this measure. We know that just recently, Downey, Lakewood, Bellflower, and Norwalk, they all have already passed this resolution to oppose this measure. We're now joining them, along with many other California cities. For us, we didn't pass any tax measure this past January, now that we are planning to increase taxes right now. It doesn't impact us so much at this stage, but the measure has much adverse implication that we don't even fully know at this time. The measure is definitely making it very difficult for a responsible agency like us to recoup costs of doing business, even for cost of living adjustments. And for communities that have had new taxes passed as of January two thousand and eighteen, they will be impacted. I can give you a few examples. They are City of La Palma, which is not far from us, City of Westminster, and also City of Fountain Valley. They have had new taxes passed in January by simple majority, and they all will be invalidated if this measure is passed. With that, we are recommending the council read by title only to approve resolution eighteen zero-zero-eight to oppose the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act of two thousand and eighteen. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Karina?
Motion to read by title only and adopt resolution number eighteen point zero-zero-eight opposing the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. Captain, pardon me. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item fourteen, adoption of the One Year Action Plan, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. May I have a staff report, please?
Certainly, Mayor and Counsel. Our last item of business tonight is a requirement by HUD. We do this every year and involves the money that we receive from HUD every year through the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Fund Programs. Before we receive the money for these two federal programs for next fiscal year, we're actually required to detail our plan for spending these funds, and Karina will go over our plan. Karina?
Thanks, John. Madam Mayor and members of the council, the item before you is fiscal year nineteen's One Year Action Plan for CDBG and Home Funds combined. This is just a routine item we do every year. We have to do a public hearing and approve this action plan to show the public how we plan to use the funding. For over two decades now, we have been an entitlement city to receive this HUD funding directly from HUD. In fiscal year nineteen, we estimate to have about one million dollars total in CDBG and Home Funds combined. CDBG and Home Funds have made some tangible improvements in our community over the years. Here is a list of CDBG-funded activities in the past, and we are recommending to do the same in the upcoming year. Activity funded by CDBG in the next fiscal year will once again include co-enforcement, graffiti removal, commercial rehab, free housing activities, and to cover some of the administrative costs. And for Home Fund, we have used the funds for home improvement projects and also cover administrative costs as well, and we plan to do the same next year. As part of the One Year Action Plan process, we are required to publish a notice and notify our citizens how we propose to use the money. On March twenty-nine, a notice was published on Paramount Journal. In addition, we provide funding information made available at the local library. We also post information on our city website. Public comment period began on March thirtieth, and so far, we have received no comments. With that, it's recommending the council conduct a public hearing, receive citizens' comments, and allow staff to adjust the budget amount if it's necessary, and adopt fiscal year nineteen's One Year Action Plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor? In opposition?
Close the public hearing.
Second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt the One Year Action Plan for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen and nineteen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Okay, comments from council members?
Madam Mayor, I would just like to say that we had a busy month last month. I attended the Metro Line meeting that Supervisor Hahn put on for the region, and we'll be having, is May third the date of our meeting? What's the date of our meeting?
For the metro meeting, yes. It's Thursday, May third.
Thursday, May third at... Progress Park?
Paramount Park.
At Paramount Park. We're going to have a meeting for the Paramount residents and other people from the region if they want to attend. So, anybody in the audience or who sees the video later, I really encourage you to attend, because the new Metro Line is going to mean some property takeaways for our residents as well as impingement on some of the properties. So, if you're not there, you're not going to be able to voice your concerns about your property, especially those along Facade Street, I think are going to be some of the most impacted for impingement on their property, so I strongly encourage you to go to that meeting. Also, I was at the Arbor Day event with a lot of you, and we had a fabulous turnout. I think there had to be at least three hundred volunteers there. I actually planted my first tree ever, and our group planted ten trees, and they told us to prepare to be there till noon, but we were done by ten-thirty because there were so many volunteers, and I don't know if staff knows, did we get the whole hundred-and-eighty-five trees planted?
Looking over to our Public Works Director?
Yeah, we did. We had one or two that kind of fell, but yeah, I think we're actually closer to two hundred.
Two hundred, great, so it was an absolutely fabulous event. And then, I would just like to go on record and thank Assemblyman Rendone for the Veterans Event that he held here at Progress Park. I did have a chance to speak to a few of the veterans and ask them if it was worthwhile attending, if they got good information, and each one of them I spoke to said they were really glad that they took the time to come out, that there were services they weren't aware of and are going to be taking advantage of. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You're welcome.
I think I don't have anything else to really offer. I was probably the same one, except the metro. We planted trees, and Tom and I were at the Rendones' meeting, and it's quite interesting, some of the things you found out, that if you're a California veteran, your kids can go to school, get a scholarship, go to school free. So, it was very interesting, so it was a lot of input there.
Any other comments?
Pretty much the same thing, that I was at both those events also, but I also want to commend our Recreation Department for Friday night's pep celebration. It seemed to go very well. The food was outstanding, as normal, and Vivian even won a little bit of a prize, but gave it away right away, so. Anyway, that was good, and I commend you and your staff. That was really good, and the same thing for Chris and the tree planting and so on and so forth. It was really great. Thank you.
And I attended all three again, so, and they were all successful, and it's so nice. We had probably over three hundred volunteers in attendance and planted two hundred plants and, pardon me, two hundred trees, and I planted two on my street on Virginia, so it was success. Thank you so much. I'd like to extend an invitation to everyone to attend this Thursday at twelve noon, our National Day of Prayer, which will be held at twelve noon on the corner of Jackson and Colorado. So, at this time, I adjourn...
Oh, Madam Mayor, comments from staff, real quick. No problem. I do stand corrected, Councilmember Lemmons. The metro meeting actually is here at Progress Plaza on Thursday, my mistake. The Paramount Park Community Center is going to be where we are holding the homeless Community Input Meeting tomorrow night, so that will be here. Just a couple real quick things. We will be back at home at the council chambers for our next meeting, so I'm sure the staff is really happy, you know, tables and chairs set up and all that other stuff. So, the council chambers is looking really, really nice, so we're excited to unveil it for you and the public as well. And speaking of the Arbor Day, yes, we did have a very successful Arbor Day celebration. We already have a video up on social media that's the way to do it, just to keep the momentum going and get it out there as soon as possible, so our social media team put up the video this afternoon, and it already has fifty-six views, you can see there. It's very short, because that's how it is on social media, so I'll turn it over, Jonathan, to hit the play button. Thank you. So, this is going to get us closer to becoming a Tree City USA. We should be completing the application rather soon and have it in. With that, that concludes, comments from staff.
At this time, I adjourn this meeting in memory of former mayor Manuel Yelich. Okay, now we'll go on to the successor agency. May I have roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Gien? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Minutes from the April third meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. At this time, I adjourn this meeting to May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Good evening, thank you.